I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Education of St. Mary's County to order for April 8th, 2015. Could I please have a motion to move into executive session?
I move the Board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining, or legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Karen, do you want this? I'll grab one from the back. Okay. All right. I'm ready to reconvene the open meeting at 9:14. Sorry for the delay. So, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I would like to thank everyone for coming out today, all of our guests throughout the room. First on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to board reports. Ms. Rita Lee.
Good morning, everyone. I have been working with students, student leaders from each of the high schools to plan the upcoming safety and security festivals. So, at these festivals, we've decided to distribute the fact sheet and other information from Walton and review that information, and then talk about the takeaway items from the youth drug prevention summit. So, what did these student leaders take away? What was their main idea that they came out of the drug summit or the planning of the drug summit remembering? And then, the main part of these festivals is to provide that contact information for students to become more involved in youth drug prevention for into next year. And so, the contact information for myself, as well as safety and security, will be provided. And if they like to become, if students would like to become more involved with the safety and security meetings next year, then that will be one avenue of generating that interest.
Thank you. Mrs. Carson?
I've been learning all about conducting a political campaign. I'm getting ready for the next run and using the Internet to do it because I've never used the Internet. So, that's, it's complicated, but it's interesting.
Mrs. Weaver?
Okay. I've been to several events over the last two weeks, but instead, today, instead of talking about those, I decided to take the opportunity to speak about autism. April is Autism Awareness Month, and April 2nd was World Autism Awareness Day. In 1911, a Swiss psychiatrist first coined the term autism. And then later in the 1940s, two other doctors started describing the behaviors of autism, which was Leo Cantor and Hans Osberger. The CDC has identified now as, you know, as they've learned more about autism, one in 68 American children have the diagnosis of autism, and it's more prevalent in boys than it is in girls. It's four times more prevalent. And currently, in St. Mary's County Public School, the, there's 180 students with the diagnosis with the disability of autism, and they, these students have been identified and received services here in our schools. There's, the St. Mary's County Public School does have an autism support team, and they are supported by, that's the teachers, therapists, psychologists, administrators, and instructional assistants that make up this team. There's also ABA, which are the providers that work with these students to ensure that their, their plans are carried through. And these are people right there on the, you know, I guess on the ground floor there helping, helping with the students. But it takes a whole team to identify and to ensure that the services are carried through. There's also specialized classes that are, are in the elementary, middle, and high schools, and that these classes do meet the needs, the complex needs of the students that have been diagnosed with the, with autism for in the school. Many of these students are mainstream, and I would say most of the students are mainstream. So, the team also then would include, you know, the teachers, you know, just the regular teachers who are working with these students daily. It doesn't just stop with the team that I've, I've identified. It also is that bus driver who starts that student's day out by picking them up because that can make or break them, and I know that. The parent educators, the regular ed teachers, which I spoke about, and the students themselves, whether it's the, their fellow students, you know, you know, befriending them and helping them with that social interaction, and the students themselves working very hard to achieve their goals. So, like I said, this is Autism Awareness Month, and I personally like, would like to thank those people that are, are there doing that every day, you know. Like I said, those bus drivers can make or break that student, you know, get into school and, you know, and especially some of the teachers that I've come across, especially like Jason Kramer, who was a parent educator and who is now a teacher, wonderful Gary O'Neal, Marcy Huff, Ms. Freeman. And like I said, I could name the enormous amount of people that have made a significant impact in these students' lives.
All right. So, with spring break, I think everyone's activities were a little abbreviated, but I would just like to compliment all of the staff and teachers during yesterday's blackout. Stories that came home were principals going down the hallway with flashlights because students were in classrooms without windows, so they were pitched into utter darkness immediately. You know, my kids had a great time because the first graders and the second, or the third graders got to pair up together. I think it's one of the things that we don't, that we don't realize, you know, that a lot of the staff and teachers in the schools are supplemental parents when the children are in those schools for eight or 10 or however many hours that they are in each day. And I'm sure there were some very trying moments. I'm sure there were some very, there were some tears. And I think from the lack of any angry letters that the Board has received from any parents, I think that overall they held, that everyone held together very well. So, I just wanted to thank everyone across the whole system for everything that they did to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, it was, it was kind of, and some students, I'm sure it was more of a non-event just because of the, you know, the cool, quick, steady thinking of all of our employees. So, thank you.
We had, we had 100% call-in for all of our radios. Everybody, everybody answered. We had radio calls throughout the entire day informing us that the power was off. We had a good communication network, even though we did not necessarily have the lights on.
And it's always great when Mechanicsville, Maryland makes the national news. From blowing up like what, the White House lights and the State Department and the Pentagon. So, great day. So, sorry, Mrs. Washington, you're on.
Oh, no, great. That was wonderful. I attended the Great Mills High School National Honor Society induction. It was a wonderful ceremony to recognize the students for their achievements, and also they did something differently. They had, it was held in the evening, and they wanted to try that out to see if they could get more parents to come because that way they would not have to take off time for their jobs when it's being held in the daytime. And it was a wonderful event, and cake and punch was served at the end. And congratulations to all the students who were inducted, the students who remained in the Honor Society, and all the teachers and parents, and everybody to help them to maintain their status. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Allen, your own?
For the fourth year in a row, White Marsh Elementary School held a school-wide science fair. The science projects for the third, fourth, and fifth grades were judged, and I had the opportunity, this is my third of four years as judging the contest. The exhibits were informative, they were interesting, and you could really see what the students had done and had learned from it. And so, congratulations to all of the students who participated and to the teachers who undertook this quite daunting task. I, I know that it is their fourth year, and they've learned something each year, and they have streamlined and improved the process each of those years, but they're enthusiastic about it, and, and it shows in what comes out of the students. So, congratulations to all.
Just a few, first of all, shout-out for Ms. Ann Johnson. She's the intern liaison at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, and she's being recognized April 28th by MSD and receiving the 2015 Career and Technology Education Outstanding Change Agent Award of Excellence. So, congratulations to Ms. Ann Johnson, and all she does to find internships and opportunities for the students of St. Mary's County is to really apply their, their learning directly in a work setting. April is School Library Month as well, and so, this month recognizes the work of our school librarians and their programs. School libraries provide materials for students and teachers that not only encourage growth and knowledge, but also materials that will develop literary, cultural, aesthetic appreciation, and ethical standards. This year's theme is Your School Library, Where Learning Never Ends. So, please, students and parents, visit libraries, school libraries in particular. The last is just making everybody aware. Next Tuesday, April 14th, the St. Mary's County Commissioners will be holding their public hearing on their recommended fiscal year 2015 budget at Great Mills High School, beginning at 6:30 PM. I ask that we all come out to support education, our educators, and all our staff that supports students and helps us have such excellent facilities. So, I look forward to seeing all of you next Tuesday. Thank you.
Continuing right along, recognitions. April is Environmental Education Month, and Mrs. Margarito Raco.
Raco.
Raco. I need like the little, you know.
Pronunciation.
Yes, exactly. Phonetic, thank you.
Rock.
My maiden name's Ortuglio, so I can relate. Yes. So.
Let's see if I can, is this good? Okay. So, I'd like to open by borrowing the first line of one of our most popular recorded phone messages. This is a message from the St. Mary's County Public Schools. The St. Mary's County Public Schools are open for environmental education. Spring has finally sprung, and as the last snow mountains recede from the big box store parking lots, it's natural that our thoughts turn to outdoor activities such as playing ball, gardening, boating, exploring the shorelines, roads, and trails of this peninsula, and environmental education. The Governor has declared April as Environmental Education Month in Maryland, but in truth, environmental education happens all year round. This month, we take a snapshot to highlight some of the curriculum-embedded environmental education lessons that go on throughout the year. Teachers will complete the last half of a professional development workshop on sustainable practices this Saturday by planting and planting a demonstration conservation garden just around the corner from this room, using native plants grown by seventh graders in their ongoing Student Service Learning Program at the Elms Native Plant Nursery. Chris Davey's social studies students from Great Mills just completed marking trails and clearing non-invasive, I'm sorry, clearing non-native invasive phragmides at the Elms. Amanda Myatt's environmental science students at Chopticon will conduct biological surveys of the creek, woodlands, and fields at Soderly this Friday, using canoes, boot power, and test equipment that they will use if they pursue a career in the environmental sciences. Spring Ridge students in Ms. McLean Blevin's math class did calculations comparing the cost of reusable water bottles to disposable and found they could save $75 or more per year by using a reusable, and then figured out how much they could save in their lifetime. They're using the kilowatt meters, using little kilowatt meters, you can just plug into the wall and then plug your appliance into it, to track electricity usage by their smart boards, and then determining the amount of energy and cost to the school that they could, that could be saved by turning off the boards when the students are at lunch and at specials. And then in Mrs. Gavin's art class, they're creating signs with sayings to remind teachers and students to turn off the smart boards when they're not in use. Lenartown Elementary students are preparing for their overnight Elms trip next week, where they'll spend an unbroken 24 hours with the classmates they thought they knew pretty well. They will saying for bay creatures, they'll debate a current environmental issue by studying and understanding a stakeholder's position that may or may not be their own, they'll expand the compassing skills that they learned in the fall by geocaching, they'll go on a night hike to identify frogs by their calls, and of course, they'll deny that that last soggy orphan sock or other small white article of clothing is theirs. These are just a sampling of the project-based hands-on learning activities that are going on during the month of April, which in turn is just a sample of the curriculum-integrated environmental education lessons which go on in the classroom, on the school grounds, and at the Elms and Soderly field sites throughout the school year. So, I encourage you to help our students learn about the environment in the environment by joining them at the Elms or Soderly or at their home school grounds in classroom this month and every month. And we have a proclamation from the Governor.
And actually, Ms. Raco, I'm going to read it from here because the lighting is better. We drew straws to see who could, it's very, it's very small. This is from the state of Maryland. This proclamation from the Governor of the state of Maryland, Environmental Education Month, April 2015. Whereas environmental education embraces appreciation of science, geography, history, economics, and government to develop positive attitudes and necessary skills to participate responsibly in environmentally, responsibly in environmental decision-making and whereas environmental education includes the interdisciplinary understanding of local, state, regional, national, and global environmental issues including air, water, and soil quality, human and environmental health and justice, biodiversity, habitat protection and restoration, land use, energy, sustainable development, and climate change, and whereas exploration and enjoyment of the outdoors both as part of a formal education program as well as an unstructured recreational activity is critical to understanding and protecting Maryland's natural resources and whereas environmental education continues to gain support from individuals, citizens, schools, higher education, nonprofit organizations, government agencies, and commercial enterprises as we face new and changing challenges, including the restoration of the Chesapeake Bay. Now, therefore, I, not me, I, Lawrence J. Hogan, Jr., Governor of the state of Maryland, do hereby proclaim April 25th as Environmental Education Month throughout the state and urge all citizens to celebrate accomplishments, conduct special events, and plan future activities that will continue to bring high-quality environmental education programs to all of Maryland. Signed by Mr. Hogan, Lieutenant Governor, and the Secretary of State. Thank you so much.
Pleasure. Please come out to the Elms or Soderly or join the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raco.
Okay. April's a busy month. It's also the month of the military child and week of the young child. We have Ms. Kelly Hall and Ms. Cynthia.
Kilcoyne.
Kilcoyne. There we go.
She told me her son, Sandy Kilcoyne. She sure looks young. She never aged.
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're going to show you a movie in just one second. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here. We are very honored for the, April is the month of the military child. We have our military liaison, Ms. Dawn Simpson, here with us today, and we have this banner from Pax River to hang to celebrate. We're going to do a proclamation in just a minute, but I want to tell you a little bit about the month of the military child. The month of the military child is a special national celebration and a proclamation that is a legacy of former Defense Secretary Casper Weinberger, and it was established to underscore the important role children play in the armed forces community. Our schools are recognizing and celebrating the military-connected student population and their contributions and sacrifices. We thought the best way to show that to you, we've made a little video for you that we would like you to see, and I would be remiss if I did not thank Lauren and Avery, who work very closely with Mary Ann Williams at the Tech Center. So, I'm going to start this video. And Ms. Short, if you would turn off the lights, please.
April is the month of the military child. The St. Mary's County Public School System has one of the largest military enrollments in the country to over 5,000 military-connected students. SMCPF is proud of our relationship with the military community and thanks them for their service.
(Music) Thank you for being on here.
During the month April, we celebrate the military children in the St. Mary's County Public School System and thank them for their strength and sacrifices.
I am an American military child. I am a warrior in my own right and a member of a military family. I serve for my family and I consider some people of the United States.
I will always take the mission first, stay inside, behind, and with my family.
I will never step to feet. I will never quit. I will not leave my fellow military veterans. I will stand beside them.
I will be as good with a gun. It is clear and ready to be tough, but vulnerable.
I will ask for help when I need it. I am a doctor, I have a duty.
I stand ready to say goodbye with my enemies as showerable as rain.
I am a representative of the American military family and the American way of life.
I am an American military child.
Okay. You could turn the lights back on. Thank you, Ms. Short. Mr. Smith, if you could join me, please, we have a proclamation. And I want to let everyone know that every school is going to recognize the month of the military child on their marquee. April 15th is the Military Purple Up, where we dress in purple to signify the importance of the military community and the contributions our students make as military children. And obviously, the purple is red, white, and blue together makes purple, which many of our favorite colors. So, everybody, we're asking everyone to wear purple on April the 15th, and it'll be on the school websites, and the kids will really be encouraged. Ms. Dawn Simpson, could I ask you to please come up here with Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Ms. Simpson, how good to see you this morning. I have a resolution for you from the Board of Education of St. Mary's County for this day, Wednesday 8th, 2015, for the month of the military child, April. Whereas, a lot of those whereas is today, whereas thousands of Americans have demonstrated their patriotism and commitment to freedom by serving in and for, excuse me, our U.S. Armed Services, and whereas we are more than 5,000 military-connected children and youth that attend St. Mary's County Public Schools, and whereas military-connected family and youth continue to make momentous contributions to family, schools, communities, the nation, our state, St. Mary's County, and whereas these children are a source of pride and honor to us all, and it is only fitting that we take time to let them know they are valued and supported and recognize that military-connected serve too. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County does hereby proclaim April as the month of the military child in St. Mary's County Public Schools and the community. All school and staff are encouraged to recognize this month as the month of the military child with appropriate ceremonies and activities that honor, support, and thank military-connected families. Signed on this 8th day of April 2015 by all of the board members. Thank you. Enjoy it.
I'd like to thank you, members of the Board, Mr. Smith, and of course, Ms. Hall, for all of your efforts in recognizing April as the month of the military child, and certainly to our teachers and principals and staff throughout the school system for all that they do, not only this month, but throughout the year, to support our military children. You could hear from the video with the military child's creed that they do make sacrifices and they do serve alongside their family, so it is fitting that we take time to recognize them for the sacrifices that they make as a military child. But yet, it's wonderful to be able to welcome them to this community and know that they will receive quality education and care from the school system across the board, no matter where they're enrolled, and that allows our service members to remain focused on their mission when they know that their children are being well-cared-for. That's one less thing that they have to worry about, and I have the wonderful privilege of being able to reassure them of that as they're inbound to Pax River. So, again, thank you for all that you do, not only this month, but throughout the year, to support our military families and especially our children. And wear purple. Okay. Also, in April, we have the Week of the Young Child, and it's an annual celebration sponsored by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, and the purpose of the Week of the Young Child is to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs. And we have another video. We thought it would be much more efficient to bring the schools to you, so you will see in this video an assortment of our early childhood programs that we're very proud of, Head Start and Pre-K, preschool special education, kindergarten. You're going to see about six different elementary schools represented during this video. So, without further ado.
April 12th through the 18th is the Week of the Young Child. The Week of the Young Child is an annual celebration sponsored by the National Association for the Education of Young Children. The purpose of the Week of the Young Child is to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs. In St. Mary's County, there are 17 elementary schools that serve Pre-K to 5, and one public charter school that serves grade K through 8. This year, early education teachers have been given time to meet together to discuss better strategies to help children and their families. Our professional learning community time is valuable to us because it allows pre-k and kindergarten teams to meet together, discuss our students' needs, and allows us to help with strategies to implement in our classroom to benefit our students. SMCPF also provides several programs to assist in early education, such as Head Start and Judy Center. The Head Start program provides services for children ages 3 through 5 and their families. The focus is to provide a learning environment and comprehensive services that supports children's growth. The Judy Center provides services such as vision, hearing, and mental screenings to ensure that children, first through kindergarten, are socially, emotionally, and physically ready for school. Currently, we're serving 673 children and families. All of our services are free, and our goal is school readiness, to ensure that children are entered in school ready to learn. It's important because it helps us to instill school readiness skills into the children and also the providers, and for them to understand that they're, they're working in partnership with their parents as their children's first teachers. St. Mary's County Public Schools recognizes the importance of early childhood education and how that will affect these children growing up. They are dedicated to finding new ways to make these students successful. For more information about these programs, visit smcpf.org. For more information about these programs, visit smcps.org.
Okay. So I'm going to ask Mr. Smith to join me again, please, at the podium. We have a proclamation. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Cynthia Kilcoyne, our coordinating supervisor of early childhood programs, both general education and special education, to also join us.
And as Ms. Kilcoyne is, excuse me, as Ms. Kilcoyne is making her way here, one of the reasons that we have created videos for both of these events is that we are going to be, we post them, obviously, to the school system website. We're going to tweet them out. We want to get as many views as possible so people can see the fantastic commitment to our military as well as the fantastic programs for our elementary, for our early childhood children. So this is a resolution from the Board of Education of St. Mary's County for Wednesday, April 8th, Week of the Young Child. Whereas, April 12th through the 18th, 2015, has been designated as Week of the Young Child. And whereas, the importance of children's earliest years in shaping their learning and development is acknowledged. And whereas, we recognize that building better futures for all children is a community responsibility and recommit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child experiences the type of early education at home, at school, at childcare, and in the community that will promote their early learning. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County endorses the observance of the Week of the Young Child as an opportunity to join other government agencies, community-based organizations, service groups, and private citizens in committing to ensuring that every young child in St. Mary's County has the best possible early childhood experience and lives in a community that values and supports each child and family. And it's signed on this day by the Board of Education, and I present it to you.
As Mr. Smith referenced, those videos will be posted to the YouTube site momentarily. Mrs. Simpson, we have a DVD for your review as well, for you to share. Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to highlight these special events in the Month of April.
We are now going to take a short break, according to the agenda, to greet everyone here. So we reconvene at 10 o'clock. Board of Education.
Oh, yes.
Public hearing, we have none. Public comment? One, okay. All right. The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. The Board takes this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, the Board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. The Board cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence their ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented at public comment. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. The Board encourages speakers to present written statements to the Board Secretary, who will distribute copies to all Board members.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Better crowd than last time I was here. Oh, dear. Today, we are going to sign a contract for the current school year, finally closing the book on the unfortunate situation brought about by last year's deficit. We're forging a new relationship and working together for the good of our public schools. Throughout all the angst and the ugly, the staff continue to deliver a quality education. And throughout this year, they continue to work hard for our kids. Even this morning, you heard that it requires specialized teams to provide programs for our kids who have disabilities. We heard about the empathy and patience that go into action right away when an emergency like the lights going out happens. We heard about the Honor Society, the Science Fair, the Saturday planting, and the overnight trips that all require teachers to give of their personal time when they could be home with their own families. We heard about the teacher who's going to receive an outstanding achievement award. This is a great place for kids to grow up. This is a great school system. So now, we hope that everyone will come together to rebuild the trust and reorganize our group and that we will recognize the great people that we have here in St. Mary's County and show appreciation for their dedication. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent, oops, I move approval of the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of March 25th, 2015, personnel, teachers, and performance matters.
Do I second?
I'd second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the Communication Tower. This is Kimberly Howe and Mr. Brad Clements.
Good morning. With us also today from the county government is Mr. Bob Kelly, Information and Technology Director. What we're here today to talk about is a 911 communications tower. We've been, before you before, to talk about this item. And we're at the point now where we have worked with Mr. Sparling, the county attorney, and our attorney, and we are before you today for the approval of the lease. St. Mary's County Government has been working on this project for a while, and the commissioners of St. Mary's County have a capital improvements project for 13 transmission towers in total. In FY15, they have a project for the final phase, which includes seven of the 13 towers. They approved a contract award for these 13 towers, for the seven remaining, on June 29th in 2012. The tower that we're talking about would be on the Leonardtown campus, which is Leonardtown High School, the Dr. James A. Forrest Courant Technology Center, Fairlead Academy II, and Leonardtown Middle School. The proposed location that was chosen was based on the ability for the signal capability to provide 911 communication coverage for the Breton Bay area, Medley's Neck, Potomac River shoreline down to Piney Point area. It was chosen due to the signal capabilities and the broadcast area. And a little farther in the presentation, I'm going to show you some coverage maps that will show you that. Several sites on the campus have been reviewed by staff and consultants and with the Board. And they've done their due diligence in being able to make sure that our needs are met as well as meeting the communication tower needs. The tower that I do have here is one that will be very, it will be the similar tower that we're building on the site the county is. And this is the one that is at the Valley Lee Convenience Center. The need for this tower is clearly demonstrated by the map that has been provided on the left in the blue. And that is the current coverage of the 911 communications that is present there. The blue shows the coverage, and where you see white, that is where there is lapses in the coverage for the 911 communications. The map on the right in green shows the location of the 13 proposed towers and the coverage after. And as you can see, with the overlapping there is coverage throughout the entire county and out into the water. So this will give very good effective communication once completed. The terms of where we are with the tower, the consultant has completed and determined the placement along a ridge behind Leonardtown Middle School, Fairlead Academy, and Leonardtown High School to be a viable location. Working with Mr. Kelly and the consultants, considerable time was spent out in the woods looking at options. We did present those options to the Board as information over time, looking at the best possible location for that and looking at how our educational needs would be met, especially in terms of expansion of our facility for Leonardtown High School in the future for potential athletic fields to be met. What we have decided is based on this potential location, the athletic fields would still be able to be expanded, and this would meet the needs of the 911 communication. So it would be in the woods, located behind these three facilities. The lease specifics have been reviewed by both attorneys. We spent a lot of time talking about indemnification because this is a three-party contract. There's a contract that exists between the county and Harris Corporation, which is the entity that will be constructing the tower. So they have a contract which becomes part of our contract. So we made sure that their indemnity clause that they have meets our needs and that we did add and strengthen our indemnity clause in our contract. We talked a lot in the terms of the contract about shared use of facilities. And then we talked a lot about the length of the lease and shared use as we continue on. So the actual specifics of the lease, it would be a 50-year lease, starting May 1st and expiring May 30th, 2065. And then from there on, there would be automatic five-year extensions with everyone agreeing to those five-year extensions. We did, as we did with the Mary McLeod Bethune Tower that we have in partnership with the county, we did agree to a third-party rental income for the school system at this time. Because it is a 911 communication tower, the county is not pursuing that option. But in the event that they do pursue that option, we would get third-party rental income if any other commercial entities were to hang communication off of the tower. The acreage involved is .477 acres, so it's less than one acre. And under public school construction procedures, it does not require formal approval from the state. But what we will do is, once approved by the Board of Education and the county commissioners, we will forward it up to them just as a courtesy. The actual tower is 350-foot tall, self-supporting, solid-legged communication tower. The shelter will be 11 feet by 6, 11 feet 6 inches by 24 feet communication shelter. The actual compound will be 100 foot by 100 foot. It'll have an internal backup generator and fuel storage container, security fence, and a gravel access road. We worked very closely with county government. And knowing that the wood area is also used by Leonardtown High School for their cross-country track, what we did negotiate is that the actual padded area for the structure and the shelter will be exclusive rights to the county for their use. The gravel access road will be non-exclusive, and we will maintain access to that on a regular basis. The easement area is the shelter and compound down here, show where the tower is and the access road. The access road will be accessed primarily right from behind Fairlead Academy. One of the things that we do know is that we have a project in for Fairlead Academy. And what we have worked out is that at the entrance point, it comes off of the back parking lot of Fairlead. In the event that we need to alter that in any way as we expand Fairlead Academy, that will be included in our project, and we will maintain the access for the tower. It then goes into the woods and rides our property line back to the tower. Evidenced on the right is the compound area, which is the 100 foot by 100 foot. They will have exclusive rights to that. Everything else, we will maintain our rights to and can still use on a regular basis. In working with Mr. Kelly, we knew that everyone would want to have a perspective of what the tower would look like under construction. So he worked with the company, Harris Corporation, and they were able to give us some perspectives of what it would look like from three vantage points. So this is what the tower would look like from the stadium area at Leonardtown High School, from the parking lot at the Forest Center, and from the entrance drive coming in on 244 at Leonardtown Middle School. In terms of where we would proceed next, if approved by the Board of Education, it would be proceeding on to the county commissioners for their approval at their meeting next week. In terms of construction, Mr. Kelly has indicated that if approved by both entities, the contractor is scheduled to start with clearing of the woods in mid-May, and construction would be completed in September of 2015. And if you have any questions, Mr. Kelly or I would be glad to answer them.
So reading, questions?
You're talking about how the existing, the cross-country team uses the trails. Is the, are the trails going to be used as the access road? Like, is that any part, is that going to, like, overlap or?
In talking to the athletic director, there should be, really at this point, no impact. If there is any impact to the trails, Mr. Kelly and I have talked about how that might be addressed. But at this point, there should be no impact to the, to the cross-country trail. It should be able to be maintained.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Crosby?
It looks very good to me, and I believe it's very important to cover a whole area, not spotches. You certainly know when you're talking to your friend on the phone, and all of a sudden, they're not there. And then later, they're there. So that's good. And you've done a good job. You'll always do a good job.
Thank you.
Okay. What is the school's liability with the upkeep and the road maintenance, then, for going to the tower?
The road maintenance will be part of the county's responsibility to maintain the road.
Okay. What about, like, with the tower and upkeep?
The tower, the tower and everything that's associated within the compound is responsibility of the county. For any purposes other than an absolute emergency, the county will have exclusive rights to the tower and should be maintaining everything within the compound area.
All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
The 911 communication towers are essential to protect people, places, and things. And the way it is now, it's been spotty, but it needs to cover the whole county, which this brings forward. And after you considered many locations, it was determined that this was the best location. You took the best interests of the students into considerations. And the woods behind Leonardtown High School was the best to provide coverage for those areas. And it won't compromise Fairlead Academy if we expand it, or the athletic fields if we do that too. So I think, and the construction's going to take place starting in May. And it should be done when school opens, so that's a good thing, too. So I think you've taken into a lot of consideration, and this will work well for the county and for the school system as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much for negotiating the third-party rental income. I know the conversation was that that's not likely to happen, but I think it's a good provision to have in there. This agreement mirrors the one that we have for our other site. I also appreciate the correction in dates that was on there. I am interested to understand, at one time, the conversation was that the access to this would be from Medley's Neck Road. And now, we've gone back to from the complex. Can you shed some light on that?
When we originally started, we were looking at an access off of Medley's Neck Road. And in doing the due diligence of looking at all of the sites, when the engineers went out, there were some topography issues. And trying to get to that site presented a significant challenge. In addition, that would have put it closer to the athletic fields as well. So there was a couple of compounding factors that would have presented issues. So when we went out and revisited that, this is how we eventually got to this point. There are several ridges out on that area. Particularly, the problem with Route 244 was going to be the crossing, trying to get to the, to the access road.
The tower is definitely needed. I think it's a good placement for it. I've been at a farm out that way, and you, up to this time, if you called 911 from that farm on a cell phone, you got Virginia. So it's, it's past time to put this in place. So thank you very much for negotiating it, and we move forward. And it starts May 1st, is that, or construction will?
Mid-May.
Mid-May, okay.
And one of the things I should have also said is the contractor has already completed three of the seven. So there is a track record to show the ability to complete the tower. So this would be the fourth.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anyone have anything else? Okay. I would like a motion to, the lease agreement?
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approve contract ITB SMCPS 215.
Read this one.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm way ahead. Okay. I said, that's done. Let's go to next one. Okay, sorry.
You just gave everyone over their heart attack by opening that.
Oh, no. I guess I said, what's that? Okay, I'm so sorry. The, I move that the Board of Education approve the lease agreement with the commissioners...
The, I move that the Board of Education approve the lease agreement with the commissioners for St. Mary's County for the construction of a communications tower and associated facilities for public safety communications as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, well.
Now, clearly where Mary wants to go is the contract for arsenic filtration removal system.
Thank you, ladies.
Well, they're all squished together, so you're okay. That was, that was. You're on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today to ask the board's approval to approve the purchase of an arsenic filtration system for Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School. First, to give you some information on the arsenic, arsenic occurs naturally in groundwater sources and is part of, is a result of changes in the geology. And it releases arsenic from iron oxide. Arsenic levels in drinking water are regulated at the federal level by the EPA, but at the Maryland level by MDE or the Maryland Department of the Environment at 10 parts per billion or less. In 2010, MDE required that we begin monitoring, this is at Benjamin Bannaker Early Childhood Center. In 2010, they required we begin monitoring on a monthly basis. And at the time, we first started monitoring, levels were at 8.5 parts per billion. And at that time, I included in a future budget request to, to start doing some reaction to the levels. Options were investigated and to remedy the situation, including filtration removal of the arsenic or the installation or replacement of the existing well with a deeper well to a different aquifer, of course. The filtration removal option was based on the cost feasibility, the cost sustainability over time. Additionally, there's no certainty or guarantee that the deep rock will be free of arsenic as time goes on. Arsenic filtration was installed. This is a smaller unit than the one I'm asking for permission today to purchase. And the cost for startup was, for the design, the delivery, and the startup was $20,575. We contracted a little bit of installation assistance from a local plumbing contractor at $995. And the ongoing maintenance is about $125 a year. The actual maintenance doesn't occur, but every three and a half to five years, but it's about $125 a year if you average it out, compared with an approximate cost of about $90,000 to drill a, a new well about 400 to 500 foot deeper than the current well with no guarantee of a lower arsenic level once we got there. The current installation, I just, the system is actually relatively simple. It's two tanks. The, the main cost is the controller and the media where the iron oxide is actually used to remove the arsenic back out of the water. That's where it's released from geologically and that's how it's reabsorbed. It's an iron ferre. And then the controller and the piping, and this is the main supply to the building, and we tapped into it. And we recently did, before I brought this to the board, of course, I did, we did arsenic level tests after this was tested and the results were what they call absent, which means it was below the detection level of the test. Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School, this is Big Bend as we refer to it, they are on two separate wells, they're not a common well. So in 2012, MDE required that we start monitoring this well and initially, levels were detected at 9.5 parts per billion. Shortly after, they dropped off to eight parts per billion. Current levels, we monitor monthly since then and have creeped up to about 9.8 parts per billion at 10 is no longer suitable for consumption. The estimated replacement cost for a deeper well at this project was about $120,000, slightly more than Little Bend because of the size of the well and the gallons per minute with no guarantee, again, no guarantee of a lower arsenic level going into the future. So we, the procurement method we used was invitation to bid, as outlined in the board policy. And the arsenic filtration removal was advertised on February 10th, 2015 on email or marketplace. Bids were received from one supplier on February 25th, 2015. 105 suppliers were invited to bid, only one chose to. I do have a little bit of additional information on that. When we bid the first time for the smaller system, we received questions from about five different vendors. And it appears in the industry that a large number of the vendors take care of large installations, I mean, public utility, large type of installations. And the rest of vendors design installations for small users, residential and such. So this, this company adage actually appears to have had a niche in that. Plus arsenic appears, from the reading I've done, it'll only be an issue in this part of the country, the southeast, and then in Washington State. And Washington State's issues are from Mount St. Helens and the, the unique geology in that area. The bid tab, only one price was returned, it's $45,869 for the design, construction, and delivery of the product, $4,130 for the startup fee, and for a total of $49,999. The Department of Maintenance is seeking the approval from the Board of Education for contract ITB SMCPS 2015 M-ARS for the design, manufacturing, delivery, and startup services for an arsenic filtration removal system at Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School to Ad Edge Water Technologies LLC in the amount of $49,999. Did you have any questions?
No questions, thank you. Mrs. Crosby?
No, I don't, thank you.
Mrs. Lee, then?
The 9.8, was that the latest reading? Because I know it came, we had seen this before and then it was taken back off, waiting for the latest reading. Is that the?
Yeah, what happened was on the original installation, I, I of course didn't want to come to you and say, we've installed one already and it doesn't work. What happened was the initial installation, like, I'd go back to picture very quickly if I could, but it'd probably take too long. There's a flow orifice in there and it was shipped with the wrong one. It was too small, so we weren't getting quite the flow through the filtration, so our levels weren't dropping significantly.
Okay.
So now they're down below detection levels, which is below four and a half parts per billion from 9.8.
Okay.
So, yeah, I didn't want to come up here and tell you, so.
Okay, so everything's working good with the filtration that's on at Little Bend?
Yes.
When you, it is going to be installed, how will that affect the drinking water for the staff and students that are currently there? Will it, or is it going to be done at a time when they are not?
We'll, we'll probably schedule the installation over a long weekend. Typically, it takes about a day, day and a half, and then we have to sanitize the system. Sanitization takes about six to 12 hours and the testing takes about 12 hours after that.
Okay.
So we'll schedule it and hopefully it'll be before the end of the school year. If need be, we'll wait till they're out. And when we do work like that, we do deliver drinking water. The only thing we can't use the water for during that period is drinking. They can still use the restroom facilities and food service. We can't, we can do that off-site, but we, we choose not to do that. So we usually will schedule it around the kids being in there.
All right, thank you.
My only question is regarding Ad Edge Water Technologies. Any due diligence or background on that company?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they've had very good reviews, but actually, they installed a system at a couple of the power plants in the area.
Okay.
So they've done larger installations also.
Okay, okay. Mrs. Washington?
Based on what you told us, arsenic is naturally occurring from geological changes and we can't prevent it, but we can monitor it. So dig in the deeper well and would not guarantee that no arsenic will be there. And it may not occur in the future, even if you dug a deeper well. So we have to be fiscally responsible with the resources that we have. So it would be best, and at the same time, while keeping the students safe.
That's better.
Okay, that it would be prudent to monitor the system on a frequent basis and to do this at a time where it's not disruptive to the learning process. So thank you for all your research and most of my questions were answered right in your presentation.
We will continue to monitor once a month regardless, from here on out, for both systems.
Correct, thank you.
For the installation at Little Bend, you had an outside plumber come in to assist with that. You don't have that accounted for in this. Do you anticipate that our staff will be able to install the unit without, without any additional assistance?
We are hopeful, yes. The, the location is a lot more accessible and the pipe is a lot larger, so there's a lot less chance of failure. We called an outside plumber because of how the pipes were located against the wall and how close they were. We were extremely confident that we could do that in-house without rupturing the pipe because of, they're very small. The ones at Big Bend, the ones at Little Bend were like four-inch pipes and the ones at Big Bend are six-inch pipes. It's a lot easier to work with, actually.
Okay. And this is not the only place in the county where we have schools with wells. How often is this testing done at our other schools?
Monthly. MDE directs when we start testing. The rest of them that we are not directed to get tested, we test annually with, when we do lead and copper testing, we do those at the same time. Chopticon is, we just got a letter from MDE about a month and a half ago that we need to start monitoring at Chopticon. The balance of the ones, to my knowledge, about nine years ago, were retapped to a lower aquifer. Those are showing small signs of arsenic already. And I, I do, every year, I read the Maryland General Assembly's report on the Patapsco aquifer, which is the lower one that we're, they're currently tapping into and the status of it. They are reporting level changes and by chemistry changes in that also, so. At the time, I, I would like to mention, at the time, about eight years ago when they did, they retapped all these wells, the other ones, Hollywood, Oakville, there were several. Filtration was not an option. The upkeep was just tremendously expensive, but the technology has progressed in the past eight years.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion? Mary?
Okay, I will do it next. I was so eager to do it. I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approve contract ITB SMCPS 2015 MARS for the design, manufacturing, delivery, and startup services of an arsenic filtration removal system at Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School to Ad Edge Water Technologies LLC in the amount of $49,999.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rita.
Motion carry. All right. More furniture purchase, come on up. Mr. Hartwick. Let's see what Spring Ridge Middle School's going to get now.
That's right. Good morning. This agenda item is similar to the agenda item we presented at the last board meeting whereby you gave approval for us to use the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchase Committee contract for student desk. As noted in that presentation, this particular contract really functions as a statewide contract. Many state agencies and LEAs throughout the state utilize it and the pricing that we receive is reflective of, of its usage. The last extension of this contract is through December of 2015. I just want to note that Ms. Mayo and Fiscal Services will be participating as a committee member when this contract is rebid. So today, we're requesting your approval to use the contract for the purchase of student chairs and science tables. For the student chairs, we looked at a number of, a couple options. Chairs manufactured by Verco and Arco Bell were looked at. Both manufacturers have a similar chair in terms of, of design and the way the chairs are constructed. In this case, the Discovery Chair manufactured by Arco Bell was significantly less and the Zoomit Chair manufactured by, by Verco, the price differential was about $25 per chair. I'll say that Arco Bell is a well-established manufacturer over the years. What a reputation for their quality, but they were recently purchased by the Han Group, which is a commercial furniture manufacturer. And I think Arco Bell is really stepping up their marketing and pricing and that may explain somewhat that, that differential. The science tables are manufactured by Allied Plastics. We noted in the agenda that these particular tables have a 30-year warranty, which, to my knowledge, is the longest in the industry. These tables are extremely well-made and comparable to laboratory tables that we have purchased previously. Again, there's a pretty significant price differential between these tables at $558 per table to those of Campbell Ray, who is supplying the laboratory casework for Spring Ridge Middle School as part of the contract. When we talk to the science teachers about their desires and their needs, understand that these tables are, are very heavy and so they ask for these tables to be placed on lock and casters. So we will be doing that so that they can be more, they'll have more flexibility in the way these rooms are set up. And it's also an advantage to the building service staff to be able to have those, those tables on casters as well. The bids for both Arco Bell and Allied Plastics were awarded to Glover. Glover has had a long history of supplying furniture and equipment for St. Mary's County Public School, probably well over 30 years of experience. We used them at Leonard Town Middle School and Evergreen Elementary School and they performed well on those projects. Based on the volume of the student chairs, Glover provided a, an additional discount above the 48.1% that is required by the contract. They ended up giving us about 55% off on these chairs and that added to additional savings, about $3,000 for this, for this phase. So we are requesting today the use of the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Contract 2008-1 for Phase II furniture purchases from Glover in the amount of $26,634.98. Lizanne, I'll take your question.
So Rita? No question, thank you. Mrs. Crosby?
You did a really good job saving us money. They must love you, that 50% discount. My goodness sake, yes, very good.
Thank you.
And good furniture.
It is good furniture.
Will this now complete everything that we needed for the Spring Ridge Middle School extension or renovation?
No, this is just Phase II. It does complete everything for Phase II with the exception of the technology. I'm working with Mr. Howard on how to procure the technology, the smart boards for Phase II. So we will be bringing these kinds of items to you again as, as the project progresses. And like I said, it's, it's a, it's a very good contract for us.
All right, thank you.
Very thorough presentation. Didn't have any questions as I went through it, so thank you very much. Mrs. Washington?
This was very good, especially the price. That's, that's very good. And it's a well-respected company. They have quality workmanship, the longest warranty and the best price, so we can't go wrong with that. Thank you.
The majority of my questions were answered within your presentation. My only question for you is with respect to the tables being placed on casters, the, will the height of the, will the manufacturer adjust the height of the table so that when the casters are included, that the height of the table doesn't change? Because that will impact the, the way the chair fits up against it.
Yes, they will. They will make that adjustment.
Great, thanks.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'm seeking a motion for the purchase of furniture.
I recommend the Board of Education approve the use of the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee's bid number 2008-01 with the Glover for student chairs and science table at Spring Ridge Middle School in the amount of $26,634.98.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Clements? Privilegio in negotiating agreements? Privileg and negotiate agreements?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mike.
As Mrs. Loflin and uh public comment announced and talked about, uh this FY fifteen contract has been in the process for about fifteen to eighteen months. And today I will be going over um not all the changes. There was a number of grammatical and formatting changes. Um as you go through the contract year after year and you're changing certain things, um they seem to get out of format and on, so a lot of effort went into it this year to get that straight. Um but there is a great number of things that we went through and I want to try to walk you through those at this time. The um, I do want to just recognize the teams. The ESMIC team, Peg Johnson, I think she just came in with this um Trish Bariuzzi. I saw her come in there at the minute. Steve Wolf, uh part of the ESMIC. Anna Loflin, of course, and Ms. Liz Purcell-Luskin as the Chief Negotiator, Uniserv representative on there. The CSMIC team, Christine Mattingly, um Gabriel McFadden, I don't think she's here. Uh Pat Davison and Faith Abernathy and of course Liz as well on the two teams. And um we did meet with uh both teams at the same time when we were negotiating and continuing in FY sixteen that way. Um as part of it, myself as the Chief Negotiator, Mr. Dale Farrell as a member on there, Tammy McCourt as the member, uh Mr. Omealy for legal counsel and Kathy Mancini who's here as well. Took care of a lot of the recording and um the document, keeps the documents back and forth between us greatly appreciated. Um as I start through, um both of the contracts were taken to ratification by um each, each association and has approved it for it to come to you today. And so I just, you know, touch base on the general of these and not go through word by word. But um there was a great desire that um the CPI training, um that if someone wants that, can work through the site administrator and provide that, and that's truly important. And we probably can't have too many in a school. So anyone willing to do that, we're more than going to accommodate and help them get through that and the recertification. And also um that was a, a very positive thing for both sides to be able to do that. Um except in the case of an emergency, um faculty meetings would not be held um, would not be regularly scheduled beyond the duty day on a Friday or before a holiday. Um this is our practice, many of these things are just trying to put them in, uh into writing so that everyone is working by the same rules and understandings of that. Our pair educators, um utilizing our electronic absent reporting system. Again, this is the process we're using, uh it's just documented there as well in, in both contracts. Um this item is new, I just, um it's, you can see at the top if they're new or it's an attitude, and I'll point that out as well. But in both contracts, uh student taping of video with their cell phones uh and other devices in a classroom. Um if this is um, you know, reported to the, the school administration, then they're going to take the appropriate action uh with that, with the student code of conduct and everything. Do the investigation and then follow through. Um revision to ESMIC, this is the acquired hours um language. It was already in ESMIC, uh you see the one change, uh the twenty-one hours. It was previously sixteen and um the twenty-one brings it to seven-hour workday, three days. So in ESMIC, uh it was just that change. And CSMIC did not have this language and this language was added completely to CSMIC uh for the exempt employees. And there's um half a dozen or more of those employees. This would provide the, and their twelve-month employees, this would provide them the same opportunity uh as um our other uh employees that aren't entitled to overtime and all of that. The um salary, uh it's just noting that uh there were no steps in place this year, either at the beginning or mid-year, and that we were staying at the thirteen, fourteen uh level. And that there was also no COLA uh offered this year. The um survivor benefits, this um is allowing that if a active employee, um there's someone on their plan, has been listed on their plan, and this person was uh to die during active service, they could continue or join, rejoin the plan um within three years. And the three years aligns it with what we did with um retirees that used to be prior contracts that an employee had to take our insurance into retirement or they couldn't get it. We agreed before to um allow them to um opt to take it within three years. That way it really saved us money. They weren't having to take it into retirement to find out if they needed it or not, um and which was the cost to the school system and the employee. Um at that time, we felt three years was a, a, a comfortable time for someone retiring to understand where they, what their needs are. This one, um there was a question that you had regarding um the split of employees. And Mrs. Luskin and I have spoke um just before the meeting and will work out that language to understand that it's, it's an active employee, so they're getting, using the employee rates of percentage cut. And at some point, they would move to the retirement one and we'll work out that. I think we can work that out and understand that. The association's rights to placing in the hiring package, so this is, the association will provide our new employees. And this is for CSMIC. ESMIC has this similar language. Um so they'll get a packet and they'll also get the um, the information about the um, being the exclusive negotiating representation and everything, their option to opt out and everything uh on that regarding the fair share and everything. Um this is sort of a next step in that we established the um new staff orientations for CSMIC that has taken place uh last year, this year. And helping provide a lot of opportunities for understanding for our non-certificated employees. On the um new in ESMIC and CSMIC uh in the sick leave, the, a change in the sick leave bank, the change is really adding uh an exchange component to it. Um so that um an employee who's in the sick leave bank may request from the sick leave bank. But if that's um exhausted there, um what they can get from there, then there could be an option to ask for volunteers to exchange. And then as the language goes through, it defines how that could happen and that the donor and whoever's receiving doesn't even need to be a part of the sick leave bank. So that keeps, that process of keeping the sick leave bank and the exchange options, but without undermining um the sick leave bank, which has worked for us for a great number of years and helped serve our employees. In the area of leave, annual leave, uh in um, twelve-month employees are entitled to a, uh annual leave, accumulate up to fifty-five days. And then the um second part of this is that uh after they reach the fifty-five days, if they have more than that, uh they had rolled over to sick leave. This provides an option of selling back um three days per year, starting in fifteen, sixteen. So it has no cost in this current year to us. Uh and then it goes through um that this is, has to be requested by the employee by September the fifteenth. Um once that's done, the balances are based on the September thirtieth of how much annual leave is there. And then the request is either, either honored to um pay three days if they're available or they'll go to the sick leave, um to their um sick leave. Uh and then, and the second paycheck in October is when those three days, excuse me, a, a second, yeah, second paycheck in October is when they'd be paid out. The other thing under annual leave is just wording that um there shall be five-day workdays um for supervisor to respond to a request for annual leave. Excuse me. In the bereavement area, what's in the red is uh already in the contract. Um what was added was the uh for other than the parent um of the employee adopted for a foster or a natural child, if the parent is not the employee's spouse, then, then the opportunity for, for them to have um leave as well and for bereavement. Um and the two things there, eight point four A and, or eight point four one in the two different contracts, that addresses the spouse already, so this is um other than the spouse. And these things of that nature, it's, it's almost hard to cover and think of all the different relationships and things. And um as experience happens, um we try to make sure we cover those and all. Um new in ESMIC, the course tuition, um under course tuition, there is the current COMAR regarding um certification of employees at their fifty-five years of age and twenty-five years at the service. Then this exempts them. Um there's discussion at times that this may go away, but at this time, it's currently um still in place. And then under employee protection, everything in red again is the current language. Um what was added is um not otherwise covered by the employee's homeowner's insurance. Uh the school system will pay up to six hundred dollars and that was previously uh three hundred. Um and when that was placed there, um it was looking at deductibles on, with on the um, the homeowner's insurance and all. And um this uh needed to be clarified and taken care of because it had been shared with employees. And I know that this came up as part of the Spring Ridge fire and, and the loss of um personal items at that, that location. New for CSMIC but in ESMIC is maternity leave, requesting the process for doing that and, and walking through that is all there. It also talks about uh the return to the workplace and um that they may not be back at the exact site, same site and things. And the requirement to notify when you're going to go out, but also when you're coming back. So that would allow some time to um be able to do the placement as best we can. So those are um part of CSMIC as well. And then in the last bullet there mainly just indicates that um, you know, that leave um, you can, you know, it has to, would, your leave would stay in aband- abundance until uh you return from, to active service. Uh severance in ESMIC, um what was there before is what's in the, basically in the dark letters, not shaded. And we had worked previously with the other association um to try to help give incentive to accumulating sick leave and uh using sick leave. So um two things were added, your years of service would help provide you um an increase. And then also the amount of sick leave balance that you are carrying. So there's two levels there. Again, trying to help people do two things, stay with us longer and also maintain their um leave, their sick leave. And so this brings um that one in compliance with the other association. And then in CSMIC, um the first two lines were also there as well, not, it's not all new. But um doing the same type of thing for the, the non-exempt employees, that would be our employees who are entitled to overtime and everything. And then our exempt employees in the CSMIC contract, um having that option as well. Uh promotion, this again is um what we're doing, but it's documented. And you can see that uh if there's a ten, eleven-month employee, their salary is calculated um based on a monthly and then um calculated out to the new uh twelve-month position or eleven, if it's going from a ten to eleven, um to that position. And then it's placed on the salary scale uh at the next highest plus one. And that's, all of that is within our current practice. Um negotiating procedures, this is talking about impasse. And um before there was language in there about going to the state superintendent and everything. But since the Labor Relation Board um has been in place, the process, the process is here. So just updating the document to reflect what the current practice is. And then um there is a provision within the contracts for joint studies if both sides agree on. Two things that came up is videotaping within the school and trying to make sure that uh, so the committee would get together and talk about some of those parameters and understanding those. As you, as an earlier one, um if something happens, everybody's pumping out their phones and, and videotaping and things. Um there are privacy things that has to be provided for. So this committee would talk about some of those and maybe bring back some language um to be incorporated into the contract. Um the other one is information technology, training initiatives and inclusion. Um this is one that both sides would again talk about if there's something to come back. And Mr. Smith and myself and Mr. Howard have had discussions of um maybe establishing an advisory, technology advisory that would help overlook hardware, software and everything so that we have a understanding of everything that's going on and maybe a help guidance on those as well. And um that's besides this, but this could help play into that as well. So that concludes the uh major changes um to the FY fifteen contract for ESMIC and CSMIC. Any questions? And then Ms. Luskin would be more than happy to answer, as well as myself.
So Rita, do you have anything?
Um just about the part where you're talking about the videotaping, um does that extend into just like taking pictures in general as well? Or is that exclusively like taking videos?
It, it's, it's, it's addressing mainly videotaping there um of things and all, yes. But as we talk in that committee, looking at videotaping pictures and all.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Crosby?
It's fine, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Um I want to thank you for keeping us up to date on the continual negotiations. And so therefore I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um hats off to all of you. I guess you don't realize all of the details, you know, I, I read through and thank you for clarifying the, the staff uh, the staff meetings before, on Fridays and before a holiday, because I read through there, I'm like, man, who would do that? So I'm glad. Like, whoa, so um, well, we got in trouble for having a PTA meeting on a Friday, so I can relate. Um but I, but thank you, thank you for all the attention, the detail and other item that I guess I didn't think of. You know, because my kids are just in elementary school, is all of the cell phones, the videotaping and the, and the pictures and things like that. So um, you know, I, I look forward to the next contract that comes forward too. So, Mrs. Washington?
Great. I want to thanks the Chief Negotiator, Mr. Clements, both ESMIC and CSMIC included, but not limited to Liz Purcell, Peg Johnson, Anna Loflin, Faith Abernathy, Mr. Omealy and everyone else involved in this collaborative effort in this, I call it the collaborative spirit for working out a negotiated agreement over the last fourteen months?
Probably fourteen to eighteen, yeah.
Fourteen to eighteen months, thank you so much. I appreciate all the work and effort, thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
There is a lot of effort put into it and we recognize that and appreciate that you are willing to sit down and have the conversation and to make it a, a civil and respectful conversation. Um we're very fortunate in St. Mary's County because that does not happen across the state. And um it is a testimony to the professionalism of our staff um across the board who uh, who function in the way that you do and, and have the dedication and the loyalty to bring this forward. Thank you very much for, for all of it.
Anything else?
I'd just like to say, we are a, um, we are a system where the majority of our, eighty percent of our budget
percent of our budget goes to people. We are about people, and how we treat people defines who we are, and so I'd like to thank you very much for your contributions and Ms. Loughman for your comments at the beginning of the session. I, I hope that, I hope that everybody's listening. I really, really do. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, I would like a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the negotiated agreements reached between St. Mary's County Public Schools and the Education Association of St. Mary's County and St. Mary's County Public Schools and the Collective Education Association of St. Mary's County for July first, 2015 through June thirtieth, 2017, with openers as called for under the duration article.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you, before you do your information items, you would just sign now at this time or, or after at the end?
Yeah, since they have been sitting here for...
Out of respect for those who have joined us and are eager to use their pens, that would be...
Yes.
Okay.
Another ten minute break, guys.
No crowns, no crowns.
All right, I'm reconvening.
I think we didn't know how to see people.
Oh, we don't have Kathy. Sorry, we're still reconvening, I've lost her. Talk amongst yourselves.
Compulsory aid. They were on that last year.
I thought she was sitting there.
God, these are...
I lost her. Sorry, it's my fault, I didn't know you were gone. Well, you're right, parallel with Mary, so it's, you know, you guys just all blend out of all three of these. Okay. All right, Maryland State compulsory attendance, Dr. Ridgell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As a result of Senate Bill three sixty-two passed by the Maryland General Assembly and Governor in two thousand and twelve, the Maryland State compulsory attendance laws are changing. The easiest way to look at this is in terms of, of the years, the compulsory attendance starting age is still five years old. That part has not changed as a result of the Senate bill. What changed was the ending age for compulsory attendance, and that is more commonly referred to as the age in which students can drop out of school. The current school year, as it has been for many years, students have to be sixteen. Next year, as a result of that change in the law passed by the General Assembly and Governor, the dropout age will then be age seventeen. Students will be required to attend school to that point of, of becoming seventeen. That is also true for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. That same law then changes the dropout age in two thousand seventeen to two thousand and eighteen school year to age eighteen. So as the law then reads, beginning with two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, next year, every child who resides in Maryland and is five years or older and under seventeen shall attend a public school regularly unless the child is elsewhere receiving regular instruction in the studies taught in the public schools to children of the same, same age. This would apply to students who turn age sixteen on or after July one of two thousand and fifteen. The compulsory attendance law is based on public school attendance, so that's why it references unless the child is elsewhere receiving regular instruction. So all students attending non-public schools, students who are in the home instruction program and so forth, come under the compulsory attendance. Then, beginning with the seventeen, eighteen school year, every child who resides in Maryland in his five years or older and under age eighteen shall attend a public school regularly, again, unless the child is elsewhere receiving regular instruction in the studies taught in the public schools to children of the same age. That would apply to students who turn age seventeen on or after July one, two thousand seventeen. With our graduation rate in, for two thousand and fourteen being ninety-three point four six percent, you can tell that this is not a large number of students in terms of our school system. The dropout rate for two thousand and four was four point four percent. So every single student matters, but this certainly is a small number of students that, that normally perhaps would have dropped out at age sixteen that we will be able to work with now since next year it changes to that age seventeen.
And just to clarify, Dr. Ridgell, that four point four percent is the cohort dropout rate, so it's four point four percent of all the children in grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve for last year's cohort dropped out of school. So it could be one percent one year, one percent one year, one percent one year, one percent one year, but four point four overall for four years.
So we've met with the principals, the assistant principals, counselors, people, personnel workers, since this law actually was passed in two thousand and twelve, so we do know it has been coming. We have certainly been publishing it in the student handbook and all so that students and parents would have that as well. It appears on the school system's website. We do have a press release that we are prepared that can be issued after the meeting today and all to be able to, to explain it additionally, and certainly when you look at all the interventions and things that the school system has been putting in place over the last few years to be able to keep students in school, students to be able to be successful in that respect. Currently, about half of the states in the nation has already made the change to seventeen and eighteen. As far as our neighboring states, Delaware and West Virginia are still at age sixteen. Pennsylvania is seventeen, Virginia and District of Columbia are already age eighteen. Any questions?
So Rita?
Oh, I just learned I can drop out of school.
You just what?
I just learned I can drop out of school now.
I believe your parents would have a different opinion, as would the entire board and the secretary of trade.
Do we have, and I'm sure you've thought about it, a lot of these kids are going to be kids that have, we know right now that we have a lot of children throughout the entire country that need skills, other than college type skills, if that a way of putting it, and we don't have enough technical centers and that type of thing. Are we going to be able to meet the needs? That's my question. Of all of these children, which you said isn't really many, who can't drop out, we'll have a truant officer on them. Well, they, we will.
I, I believe we can, Mrs. Crosby. When you look at, for example, like Fairly One, Fairly Two...
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
When you look at the latest in terms of Apex and students being able to retake courses...
But we have thought all of that out.
Being able to do it all online, I mean, those kinds of initiatives...
Go to CSM, that's another one.
Correct. Will really help students to be successful.
That's the main thing.
And it is a small number right now that we're working with.
Okay, just checking. And we'll keep that, some kind of graph that shows that, yeah. Thank you very much.
I, I have a question on, I know that you have the must be eighteen, you know, wanted to eventually gets there. Is there a cutoff age that, you know, the student is now like nineteen or maybe even twenty, and I'm not talking the students that are in special ed, but, you know, that you have a cutoff time that you need to have that, you know, graduation requirements done by?
Twenty-one.
It's for every, oh, okay. Okay. That's my question, thank you.
Now, of course, if you graduate and get your diploma before you're eighteen, you can, it's okay to come out of school.
Okay.
And, and honestly, we, we, that's a, that is a substantially growing number over time. Over the last five years, we have many more students who are accelerating their path through high school and graduating at sixteen and a half years old and entering college and post-secondary opportunities at seventeen.
Is CSM a four-year college yet?
No.
That's what we're going to have to have.
But they have multiple articulated programs with the University of Maryland and Southern Maryland Higher Ed Center that, so it's a fantastic beginning if you are pursuing.
We're going to have to have.
Mrs. Washington?
I think that age sixteen was much too young for a student to make an adult decision to drop out of school, and that decision would have had long-term negative consequences throughout that person's life. So I, I appreciate this decision that the age was changed, and I, we at St. Mary's County Public School believe all students can and will learn, and we have strategies and interventions in place to help all students, and we try to meet the need of each individual student one by one. So I applaud this, and students need to stay in school and we need to help them so that they can realize their dreams to become productive members of society and be contributing members and citizens, of course, with good character. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Allen?
Reinforcing the belief of the board that students need to stay in school and, and that we need to help them be successful. We put those interventions in place before this law was ever even discussed, and I think we are proving how successful those things are. It's, it's not enough just to tell a child, you cannot drop out, you're going to have to stay. If, if they're not successful, then there's all kinds of trouble they can get into to just try to, to prove that they're in the wrong place, that they, they don't want to be there and they're not going to be. So I, I applaud those who continue to work with and, and help them as they, as they work to achieve the success. You've said, you know, that there's not a lot of students who fall under this, but it's one thing for the legislature to say that they cannot drop out, but if they decide they're going to, what, what consequence is there? If they leave school bef, without graduating and before the age of seventeen and then eighteen?
Currently, it would go back, as, as Mrs. Crosby had mentioned, they would come under the habitual truancy laws.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted you to clarify that.
We would have to proceed, and ultimately, of course, if a student is not attending school, and we cannot determine a valid lawful reason as defined by the state for a student to attend school, then ultimately, the law requires me to send the information to the state's attorney's office for St. Mary's County for them to consider prosecution.
Got it.
And keeping in mind that the current Maryland state standard for habitual truancy has to be less than one percent, so the state is saying that with the full passage of this and its fruition in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, their expectation is a ninety-nine percent graduation rate for all schools in the state of Maryland.
May I say something, Mr. Smith?
That would be quite, we would be very proud of that.
I agree that we need, our graduation rate is going up. That's wonderful. All right. Now, also though, we have a little problem. There are kids over there at CSM that are having to take remedial courses. Aren't, we got to cut down, how, do you know anything about that? I, I've learned about that through talking to Charlie Walsh, is one person that told me, and I don't know who these kids are, but I assume that some of them came from our school. Do you know?
Students, when they enroll into CSM, do take a placement course.
They're taking what?
The placement course at CSM determines their starting point of courses in the English and math areas.
Yes.
And sometimes CSM decides that they would be better served by taking a, sort of a review kind of course, and they begin there and move forward.
I just think that we need to make sure that our children have the skills not, to not have to go through those remedial, I'm using that word, courses, because that will come up with all of this. That's all.
It's one of the reasons that the, with the Maryland state curriculum, that it's articulated not just within K-12, but beyond.
No, to sixteen.
It is in a, it is a direct measure to, to address just that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Tammy McCourt?
Oh, I've missed her.
March twenty fifteen financial report.
Lions, figures, lion, lions, fig. Do you see how it's just written, signature in the journal? He just needs to... It's true. Okay. It's true. I mean, we don't want a bunch of kids taking a bunch of remedial...
As of March thirty-first, on the revenue side, we have received one hundred and thirty-six point nine million dollars of the one hundred and ninety-five million dollar budget. All items are tracking on as expected. On the expenditure side, once again, the area of noted concern is special education. We have one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars unobligated as of the end of March. However, as of today, we have fifty-four thousand dollars unobligated, so we're looking at year-end projections, and on all likelihood, we'll be proposing a budget adjustment to you in the very near future. I would like to point out though to you for the special education transfers line, if you look at that line, that one point eight million dollars year-to-date includes year-to-date encumbrances, so we currently have encumbrances included in that line of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And our balance is currently at one hundred and eighty-four point eight million dollars to include all salary and other purchase order encumbrances currently out there against the one hundred and ninety-five million dollar budget. Are there any specific questions?
So Rita?
No question. Thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
Every, I've been here now seven years. Thank you. Anyway, it's all the special education, but I know how expensive that is, especially if we send children out of county. Are we still sending a lot out of county, Miss McCourt?
We are still sending some children out of county, yes ma'am.
Yeah.
I don't have the exact numbers, though.
And I know of cases that where children are being served within the county in a very creative ways, and they're being served probably better than if they were sent out of county, and we, I'm not criticizing you at all. And we need to investigate those ways, because I know some of them, and give them to other children too, you know, and we might not save anything, but we won't be in any more of a hole than we are now, just to suggest. Thank you for all your work.
Okay, and I know that I had asked these questions previously and I was provided an answer. Thank you very much. It was on, I did not understand about the transferring of funds for state award books. I was provided an answer. I'm not sure if that was Dr. Marr that provided that answer or...
Dr. Marr, Regina Greeley, working through the specific texts that would fall into the category of state award books.
Right, and I, I did not understand what that was, so I asked for clarification. I was provided clarification what state award books were, and thank you very much. And also, I had asked about the funds moving for, from one area, from instructional textbooks to another area for new teachers, and that was, thank you, whoever provided me this answer for...
Dr. Marr.
It was who?
Dr. Marr.
Oh, oh, I say, thank you, Dr. Marr, even though he is not here. He had said that it was for the new teacher orientation to, for a seminar, and that was held at the Forest Center. So I just had questions on that, and those answers were provided for me earlier by Dr. Marr.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions, thank you very much.
Mrs. Allen?
Maintenance of plant, the contracted services, can you speak to that one?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Because it's not, it isn't detailed below, or at least.
We are currently in the process of performing a budget adjustments from the supplies and materials accounts to contracted services.
Okay. And the questions that I had posed earlier were the, with respect to the, the budget adjustments, that the safety and security assistant that's being provided at Leonardtown High School for the remainder of the year, and then also the evening, the one-on-one evening counselor psychologist.
And it's just, it's the continuation of the program at, at one of the sites. And for the safety and security advocates, it's to, it's to fill in for a, a person who is out for an extended period of time for the remainder of the year. And so we are still maintaining as we are obligated and we, of course, would want to do that employee and their benefit and their salary. We do need, the need within the system for a person, an actual physical person to be at the school.
And I appreciate that clarification, that understanding. It, it helps me to know if this was expected, unexpected and, or if it's, if it's above and beyond what we're already providing. So I, I appreciate that. Thanks.
And that brings us to the end. The next board meeting will be on Wednesday, April 29th. It is an evening meeting. Okay? We are adjourned.